I pledge allegiance of the United States of America into the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Please bow your heads for the Lord's Prayer if you will. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Our next public workshop will be Tuesday, December nineteenth. And our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, December twentieth. The nineteenth will be at ten a.m. in this room. The twentieth will be at ten thirty a.m. and that will be our last meeting of the twenty twenty-three.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco. Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. And accept and approve the video recording of the December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three Commissioner's Regular Meeting is the official meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco. Item number two is to approve the bills.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Commissioner, can you please move the mic towards you a little bit so you can't hear you back there at the desk so she can't hear you? The public can't hear you. Thank you.
Item number three is to approve the Valley Vision two thousand and fifty allocation in the amount of one million dollars with five hundred thousand dollars to be paid in December of two thousand and twenty-three. And the remaining five hundred thousand dollars to be paid in June, two thousand and twenty-four with the option to opt out of payment of the second installment based on performance review. The goal of Valley Vision two thousand and fifty is to stabilize and expand existing businesses, increase public awareness of arts and cultural industries, increase public participation in workforce training, expand education and employment opportunities, and increase stability of nonprofit organizations and businesses. The group seeking the funds includes representatives of the East Gate Regional Council of Governments, Valley Partners, Western Reserve Port Authority, Youngstown Foundation, and the Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. I don't have anything except for the presentation that was made. Who asked for this to be put on our agenda?
I did. At our workshop last week, we had another presentation that you weren't at by the Board Authority. We talked about it. Mahoning County did the same thing last week. We read their press releases and their news coverage. There was also an article in the paper after that praising what Mahoning County was doing. And we we discussed last week a modified blend of five hundred thousand now and then five hundred thousand after they show us results. You could have been there. You weren't there.
First presentation was a reiteration of the.
Well, we've heard three so far. You've heard the one here, but we had two at workshops that were detailed.
Commissioner, the.
Yes, it was the same thing that they gave us before.
Okay.
It's a great investment in our future.
All broken down by the numbers, too.
We are. We are investing our own money and our own people and our own talent and the people that we deal with. We're going to plug some holes with nonprofits and some smaller groups. They're left to side when economic development comes by. Usually it's the big fish that people are targeting. This is a chance to get the little fish and to plug the holes that we create a better environment, better work environment for all citizens in the Mahoning Valley. And and this makes it more of a valley concept. We have a lot of our people that work at Altium and work in in Trumbull County but live outside the county and vice versa. And I'm very, very excited about this and I'm proud and honored to be able to vote on this because I believe in the talent we have here in the valley and I'd rather invest in them than any other entity.
I'll second that. I just want to say that obviously reinvestment in our community. You know, when we talk about our mandated services and what we have to provide on a day-to-day basis, that comes first. But because of the financial constraints and the and the financial wherewithal that the county has had over the years, we're able to reinvest this money back into the community, not just into mandated services, but into real economic development for our small businesses, for workforce development, for grants and scholarships for our kids. This is. This is a proactive approach rather than just sitting on our hands and doing nothing. We got to take some major swings here. This is a major swing and we. Commissioner, can I finish, please? This is a major swing and and communities that sit on their hands don't get anything. So we have to be proactive rather than reactive in this county, and this is one of those ways we're going to try to do that.
And I'm proud. We have the money. We we have two hundred and ten million dollars in the bank and I'd rather than sitting in the bank, I'd rather be with our brilliant-minded economic development people making that money turn into more money and turn into more services and more goods and more quality of life for our citizens rather than sitting in account worrying about the interest we're getting on it. Let's invest it in our people instead of in a banking institution.
What?
Are you guys done?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we we have a county that doesn't have a capital improvement budget that doesn't have a capital improvement plan that runs everything based on putting out fires and in the next crisis. There is no preventative maintenance plan. There the buildings that we have are not graded, so and the board will not cause our staff to do that. Unfortunately, when you have a government that doesn't plan for preventative maintenance and problems such as this, the money in the bank needs to be there for those things. Additionally, this funds, the funds that are being approved that you guys are promising, promising are going to organizations who we already have contracts with to provide the exact services. We have the Mahoning Valley Partners, the Port Authority, the Chamber of Commerce. We have we have contracts with them and we fund them with our bed tax. They should already be working together. We have our our planning commission that's gone from two people to, I don't know, eight right now. I really don't know, but when do we as a board of commissioners stop looking at the ways to spend our money and how we can save it and plan to prevent emergencies rather than giving out every request that comes to us?
When do we as commissioners quit critiquing every single agenda item that comes up in front of us and start actually doing something to move forward in a positive thing instead of roadblocking every legislation that comes down and trying to pick it apart and find the bad in everything that we do?
I'm just curious. I'm curious, Commissioner.
To make sure that we're critiquing things and reviewing things. If you want someone, you know, clearly there's a difference between rubber stamping and saying yes, being yes men and actually reviewing, looking at the totality of the circumstances, all the services that are already provided, all the things that we have ignored and just doing what comes before us.
So first of all, just just to clear up what you're saying. There was a study done by Ernst and Young that looked at your. You're big on looking at other like-sized counties with same demographics. We we do not give to our economic development partners anywhere near what those other like-sized counties do. This is a way for us to bridge that gap and become more competitive with new businesses and to retain the businesses that are already here.
Counties are we talking about? Because like-sized counties have.
Like-sized counties with the same demographic.
So like-sized counties with the same demographics also have regional and public transportation with it, which is the largest impediment to economic development.
So you want to spend seven million dollars on that.
Which is the largest impediment to economic development and job retention and population retention. So it it's none of what.
But you just said about saving money. You want to put on the ballot and get seven million dollars of taxpayer money. This is our money that we've saved that we're reinvesting into the community.
That's not what. Don't put words in my mouth.
But you're advocating for a seven million dollar tax.
Apples with oranges. You're comparing a community that has no transportation for the general public or people to get to and from job sites, work training or anything with the exception of the Warren Express. And then you're you're comparing us to viable communities that have robust services, which are what causes them to flourish. But I cannot help you to understand.
Those communities that have public transit are not are not flourishing.
Call the question.
How come so many of those?
Call the question.
Asking you a question. I'm asking you a question.
Where are you? Wait. What's called the question mean, honey?
I'd like to ask you a question if I could.
Just serious.
Seriously, I'd like to ask you a question. All those communities that you talked about with public transportation, are they all flourishing?
Questions, you know.
They all flourishing?
Call the question.
Ridiculous.
Clerk, do you know what that means?
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
For the reasons I've already stated now.
Item number four is to transfer monies and to increase appropriations to and from the funds as listed to be made to to be used for the Valley Vision two thousand and fifty allocation monies may be made payable to the Western Reserve Port Authority.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No. I make a motion to table agenda items, five, six, seven, and eight because they did not. We did not comply with our own policy, which says that we're supposed to be advertising. I did not receive any proof of advertising.
We did advertise.
Where is the proof?
What proof do you want? Which email do you want that you didn't read of yours?
Did you?
We did advertise the first one on September eleventh, and here's a copy of it. Went in the Tribune, went on our website. Those are for the three reappointments and we we had three applicants apply for it. Here's the other one that we did. This one was on November third for the at-large vacancy for Mr. Carpenter advertising the Tribune, put on our website, read your email, do your job, and you don't have to come up with.
Come here prepared.
Requested that.
When?
Ms. Lisa didn't send that in our.
We got. All of us got.
Yeah, we already got them. We already.
All of us got emails, Commissioner.
This is my packet and I don't have.
That's your packet today. You wanted to redo your work again. She already sent it to you in September and October.
Talk about a waste of time.
Stuff she already sent you because you don't feel like opening your email or checking your mailbox?
Comes to items that are going on our agenda.
Move on.
We're moving on. We're doing our jobs. We're prepared. We go to the meetings. We read our email. We do our job. We don't come in. You sent emails last night at twelve thirty a.m. as you're scrambling to get this stuff done last night and try to figure out the where ways you can shoot holes in the bucket. We're not going to stand for that today.
It did not include even the applications that I have, though I didn't have any of the proof of the advertising. The applications did not all include.
Look at the date stamps on the back.
Do you understand that this is a statutory board and you have to have some of them?
Absolutely.
Some of them need to be.
Section seven oh three, the revised code, yes.
Some of them need to be recommended by the communities to represent that community.
He's right. Those.
And we we make.
You should know that, Commissioner. You've been here four years.
Large positions. We we need to have someone from the city of Warren, which we do, already in a different seat.
How do you not know that? How do you not know that?
The Home Rule County, which is Starling St. George. These are all at-large seats. Read the revised code.
Because you come here unthwarted and you want to vote against them.
Voting your revised code, but you're not reading it.
Can you say it again? Just a little.
Saying you're not doing your job. We all have this stuff. It's written right there. If you read the revised code, we can see where board members are. These are at-large seats as they were advertised in the.
Chairman, let's move on. This is a dog and pony show. Let's move on, please.
Applications aren't filled out to show which.
They don't have to show out for which on their application.
There's an actual.
We advertised for which. That's what they put in for.
So there's a Trumbull County. Let me just explain this to you.
Go ahead.
There's a Trumbull County Planning Commission Board Member Appointment Application that needs to be filled out. We have some of these in our packet that came in that are resumes only and some of them that do not have the proper application. When a resume comes in, it would be incumbent on our our staff to send them out the proper application so that they can fill it out. Not all of these have have that.
Did you ask the staff for that?
She put it together a packet. Lisa, what what all did you leave out of my packet?
I didn't leave anything out of your packet. If anything is not in there, you took it out.
Let's please move on. This is ridiculous.
Item number five, to reappoint Mr. Bob Moody as a member of the Trumbull County Planning Commission Board for an additional three-year term commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Mr. Moody is a resident of Warren, Ohio.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
You do you remember, Commissioner? Let me just make a point here that you appointed. You haven't been in a planning commissioner meeting since two thousand and twenty-one. You appointed somebody to represent you twenty minutes after you met them, after you went in to get a ticket taken care of or tried to get a ticket taken care of. You knew this person for twenty minutes and you appointed them to represent you on the board. Is that true?
How does it work? Tell us.
Did you meet? You said that was the first time you met her. Twenty minutes and then you appointed her to the board.
Board. First of all, there's an order. You should know how to conduct a meeting. Discussion's already been closed. Discussion only comes after a second. You're just sitting there screaming in rare form today. I don't.
It's not screaming at all. You're the one who's unprepared trying to poke holes in all these things. These are the only applicants we got.
You act like you care about this board and you haven't been there since two thousand and twenty-one.
This is not the. This is not the proper way to run a meeting.
It's not the proper way to be a commissioner to appoint someone to do your job either and not attend a meeting for two years and then say, reelect me.
And then be critical of the board.
Item number six is to reappoint Ms. Melissa Miller as a member of the Trumbull County Planning Commission Board for an additional three-year term commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Ms. Miller is a resident of Eastland Township.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We do. We did not. We did not.
Yes.
No.
We received those in October. We received first in October. That's the new packet. The other packet has the three reappointees that we got in October. That's the one we got last week.
We all got them, Commissioner.
You have it. We all got it.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to reappoint Ms. Rachel Nader as a member of the Trumbull County Planning Commission Board for an additional three-year term commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Ms. Nader is a resident of the city of Portland.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
I'll read. I'll read number eight.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael Jarenovich to the Trumbull County Planning Commission Board for the unexpired term of Mr. Bernard expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Number eight, I'd like a motion to appoint James De Senzo to the Trumbull County Planning Commission Board for the unexpired term of Mr. Bernard Carpenter expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. De Senzo graduated summa cum laude from Youngstown State. That's twenty-four years in building. He is vice president of the Downtown Development Group, who has invested multi-millions of dollars in our community. And he's active like no one else that I know in the community.
The clerk's boyfriend and.
That's nothing to do with any of that. We're not a personal.
She filled out his application for him. Um.
No, I did not.
Okay. Uh.
He was summa cum laude from Y S U. He can fill his own application out.
Problems that we have here is that most of the applications, with the exception of two, will have potential conflicts of interest. We have, you know, obviously a mayor, a special projects director, a safety service director from other communities, and those will clearly present conflict of interest at times. And this is a person who is working for a development group that is working and planning that's going to want this, want more access to things for their purposes, and there will be conflicts of interest.
I'm sure he'll know when to say. We had a conflict of interest yesterday.
I mean, could you be more political, too? This is the same man. This is the same man who is going around putting up the signs in the Regional Chamber of Commerce to remove me from office.
Thousands of people putting up signs removing from office. Thousands.
Intimidating me down the hall, down the, down the things, screaming out in the meetings. You you guys really, we should. Oh, I saw him.
Here's the thing.
Interesting. We should be putting professionals and people with a background. Miss Dr. Jarenovich has been applying patiently for so many years.
A great guy.
Has never been, never actually been seriously, you know, recommended or considered because everyone just reappoints. And now we have him who he's worked with Trumbull one hundred. He's a doctor. I mean, too, he works in planning for other communities related to college campuses and everything, just a wide variety of planning background and volunteers with Trumbull one hundred and a lot of different things on his resume that he does his volunteer work as opposed to just.
So I think.
You know, working for someone to.
And I'd be willing. I mean, if the press wants to look at the resumes, I looked at them by resume only. When I look at the resume.
Did he lose his job with Trumbull County? Was he terminated or is it only? I just, I'm asking.
I have no, no idea. Anything about that? I'm looking at the qualifications.
Okay.
So so here's the thing. When we talk about Warren Downtown Development and that group, there's no, there's no mistake about it. They've invested millions of dollars in the downtown Warren area. Can I finish, please? I let you talk.
No, you don't let me talk. If you think that letting me talk is sitting back passively.
Commissioner, you talk fifty percent of the time.
Or interrupting.
You don't stop talking. This isn't a talk show.
Family, please be a gentleman.
Can I please talk? Downtown Development Group has invested millions of dollars in the downtown area and as you know, or as you should know, a lot of it has gone. There's been some sideways conversations with the city of Warren with different economic development groups. This group feels left out. It does feel left out. It feels like it's been out of the out of the loop. It feels like it's made the investment in the community because I've talked to Mark Marvin.
Oh, okay.
Have you? So they've made an investment in this community to the tune of millions of dollars. I think they deserve a seat at the table when it comes to economic development, especially when you're investing millions upon millions of dollars in the downtown area. It only makes sense.
I think we're lucky to have them to have a seat at the table. Not so much that they deserve it. That's going to be an asset to the community. That's what they do. They develop. And that's what Planning Commission does. They develop our county. They do the plans for future development. They bring in grant money. The half of downtown Warren, when you see Robyn Theater or everything.
Robin Theater and everything else.
Yes, it's been grant money brought in by them.
But it's been Mark Marvin's investment.
That's right.
So did a lot of people and. Okay.
So you're going to poo-poo all the investment that Mark Marvin has made in in Trumbull County and in downtown Warren. I think he'd be an asset on the board.
You attend the Robyn Theater regularly, and that was renovated by them. That's got his fingerprint all over it. If it wasn't for James De Senzo, they wouldn't be there the way that it is.
If anything, if anyone is being political right now, it's you because you're looking at it from that lens. You're not looking at it and what the investment was in Warren and Trumbull County. We should be looking at it through that lens.
We should be looking at people for which there would be no further.
And he's a Warren guy who went.
What conflict?
Western Reserve High School.
What conflict?
Meeting properly and stop interrupting. Stop being a male chauvinist pig.
It's just ridiculous.
I was saying before I was rudely interrupted, we should be looking, we we should be looking for seats of people who would not have potential conflicts of interest, period.
What do you want? You want outsiders from outside the area that have no doings in Trumbull County? Do you want a homegrown talent to do the best for our own community, the ones they live in?
I won't debate with an idiot. These are all people who care about the community. Dr. Jarenovich is.
You don't think the person you appointed on the board sees Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership Group? There's no conflict there? What's the difference?
Exactly.
That's going to be a bigger conflict.
Here to argue. I'm here to conduct.
Actually, you are. You're the one arguing.
Yeah, you you are. You brought it up.
I'm asserting my views. You can. You can disagree and and do whatever you need to do for favor-broking purposes, but I choose to just.
Your favorite broking for Dr. Jarenovich is okay.
Favor.
Oh, okay.
Okay, just looking at someone who won't have a conflict of interest.
How do you know that there will be a conflict of interest when we talk about what?
I am certain that the doctor won't.
I suggest you look at the doctor's records, too.
Okay.
Past records.
Are you trying to say something? What are you trying to say?
I just said you should do your homework.
Past records.
You should do your homework.
Call the vote clerk, please.
Do you want me to go ahead and read it over again with the term and?
I did. I did, and it was seconded.
I seconded it.
Asking him.
If it's already, you should know your job. If it's.
No, I do know my job.
For discussion.
She knows. You don't have to tell her.
There's so many interruptions by you. It gets a little polluted up here.
You are nasty.
Pollution is a good word. Very good word. Go ahead.
To appoint James De Senzo to the Trumbull County Planning Commission Board for the unexpired term of Mr. Bernard Carpenter expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
For the reasons already stated now.
Item number nine is to approve the signing of a letter of support for the.
Oh, wait, let me read that.
For the Trumbull Career Technical Center.
To ratify.
President runs the meeting.
Ratifying the Ohio Career Technical.
Does not stop to ratify the letter of support signed by the Board of Commissioners for the Trumbull Career and Technical Center, request for funds for the Ohio Career Technical Education Equipment Grant.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
And and for the record, these need to say to ratify the letter of support signed by the Board of Commissioners moving forward. And I brought this up a few weeks ago. It's not execution.
You have a legal opinion that says that.
Execution. It says approve the signing and it doesn't.
You have a legal opinion that says that.
It even says approve the signing and it doesn't even say by home.
You're saying first to ratify the signing. We didn't sign anything. You have to ratify.
I didn't.
When you get a legal opinion that says that, we'll do it.
You guys are just too dumb to fix.
You just said the ratified signing.
For recognizing that it had to say signed by the Board of Commissioners. Thank you. Okay.
When you get a legal opinion, you can start dictating those things.
Okay.
And I don't know how you ratify something you haven't signed yet.
Item number ten is to authorize an agreement with Youngstown State University in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the analysis of impediments to fair housing update due honor before July first, two thousand and twenty-four. This is being paid for with Project Year two thousand and twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Fund two-two-five and local cost share from the cities of Warren and Niles.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Um, because we, our staff is already so large. It's a planning commission and I just don't understand why they can't analyze, do this analysis. No.
So now you don't want to partner with Y S U.
Okay.
You don't want the chamber. You don't want the port authority. You don't want the East Gate. Now you don't want to deal with Y S U.
That department.
Unreal. Absolutely unreal.
Triple since I've been here. Let's just let them do work.
And they used to have eighteen employees. They told you that before back when you interned there and started there or whatever, or tried to apply there.
Item number eleven is to accept a proposal for services for the proposed alterations to the existing Veterans Service Commissions Building by Philip Secanic Architects, Incorporated to provide the architectural services necessary for this project free of charge. The alterations would be interior only and would include the conversion of existing storage areas to restrooms along with alterations to convert existing office space to office and storage area. These changes are as discussed earlier this year and as indicated within the proposal for services. Philip Secanic Architects, Inc., are proposing to provide architectural services necessary for this project free of charge pro bono for the veterans of Trumbull County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, discussion. I I did get this. I was looking at it, but it looked like there were some additional services. I just wanted to look at it again, services that would be paid for.
Not.
Wait, wait, I'm looking at it again. There's a schedule of fees for miscellaneous reimbursable expenses. This is a project. So I'm trying to understand why there's a page after the signing. So I'm trying to understand why there's a page after the signing sheet with a schedule of fees. And then it says to reference the schedule of fees. That's the only thing that I have a question on. Um.
Why do you wait till today to have that question? I don't understand.
Not at midnight.
I don't understand.
I did. I got a response from Herm Brewer, but it still has this last page. Um.
Response from Herm Brewer. You asked him after midnight last night.
Doesn't matter. At least I'm working. Um, so hang on. So can we make it, uh, let me see. Reform Services.
You're just reading the resolution.
Yes, and I'm looking to see if there's could be something modified. Is, so it's architectural and then construction management. There's no, there's two different services that they provide. They do the architectural and then they.
It's all pro bono.
All of it, even the construction.
No, send us an email.
No, not the construction, but the, uh, the oversight, the.
Right.
I'm just saying because there's a, there's still a fee, uh, there's one fee scale that says zero for the design. And then there's another fee scale that says project architect, project manager, the, you know, this one does have fees. So there's a little bit of conflicting information here. That's all.
Well, the agenda item is we are voting on is to provide the architectural services necessary free of charge. That's it.
Free of charge. Okay. Even though the contract I'm looking at does have a schedule of fees, I'm just, I was just concerned about that. But, okay.
Mr. Cantalamaesa? Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twelve is to concur with the county engineer and receive the resolution number twenty twenty three dash one four five passed by the Howland Township Trustees on September thirteenth, twenty twenty three, requesting the Howland Township number eight bridge be renamed the Howland Veterans Bridge, S F N seven eight three eight four one seven, in honor of those individuals from Howland Township who have served their country's armed forces. And the Howland number nine bridge be renamed the First Responders Bridge, S F N seven eight three eight six one one, to recognize those individuals who have served Howland Township as dedicated public servants and to set up the public hearing for the consideration of the bridge name changes. Howland Township number eight and number nine bridges are located on North River Road between North Road and State Route forty six.
Make a motion to approve.
Second and discussion. Um, if we ratify this, they do set the hearing already for next Wednesday at ten AM in this room, Commissioner Frenchco and Commissioner Cantalamaesa. If you can please both put it on your schedule. It would be great to show honor to the veterans and the first responders by all three of us being here uh, for that resolution or for that, uh, dedication.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Robert Gilranen for the position of laborer, Mosquito Creek Waste Water Treatment Plant with the Sanitary Engineers Department effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty three, pay range three fourteen forty five per hour.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number fourteen is to accept the maintenance bond, number P B zero zero five eight four three zero one eight eight one submitted by Pollard Land Services, Inc. For the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project number five dash S dash thirteen, Weathersfield Township. Maintenance bond is issued by Philadelphia Indemnity Insurance Company for a period of two years from December thirteenth, twenty twenty three to December twelfth, twenty twenty five, in the amount of five hundred seventy four thousand one hundred sixty one dollars and fifty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
For Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to submit applications and execute contracts with the Ohio Public Works Commission in regard to state capital improvement program funds for the Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project number seven dash S dash twenty two for the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to act as Chief Executive Officer, Martha B. Yoder Auditor to act as Chief Financial Officer and Gary Newbrow, P E Sanitary Engineer, to act as Project Manager.
Make a motion to approve.
Martha, you have something before we?
See? Okay.
Let me get correction Martha C. Yoder.
Make that correct.
So as written with Martha C. and I'll second that.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes. With the change.
Item number sixteen is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign and accept for use substantial completion the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project number five dash dash S dash thirteen located in Weathersfield Township, Trumbull County Combined Sewer District.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
For Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Oh, discussion, I, discussion. I have a question. There's a, there's a punch list issued, a letter with a punch list issued on December sixth. Um, I read it, but it didn't give them a timeframe. Um, do you normally say the remaining work or with a punch list, it needs to be done in thirty days or something like that?
Gary Newbrow, Sanitary Engineer, uh, we can't hear you back there. What did you ask?
There is a punch list dated December sixth. It shows that it was substantially completed, but there are some things that needed to be left, but it didn't give a date by which to complete those things. Do you normally say, here's your punch list, thirty, please complete within thirty days?
We won't release the retainage until that is done.
But the question is, do you give them a timeframe? I think it would be good to give them a timeline.
All right. It's, it's understood with the contractor that it's to be done uh, within a reasonable amount of time and we're not going to release his, uh, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of your retainage, uh, until it's done.
I'm saying, moving forward, it would be wise to put a timeframe in there. And I want to know, has it been completed because the letter was written or?
Why would it be wise? Like, explain.
All right, right now.
He just, it's a contract. They're talking about a contract and he said a reasonable amount. And if you don't define that, I think it's important that you y, y, you can't just speak in subjective terms when it relates to contracts. So giving someone a certain number of days to complete something, I think is
right.
Proper.
Um, the, right now, this is just letting, i- it is acceptable enough for the residents in the project area to get connected to, to it. And he is still under the time constraints of the contract, which gives him a certain amount of time to be substantially complete, which he has met. And he also has this, what's called restoration time right now. So.
Okay, so.
So that's already within the contract. Yes.
So it's listed as restor-, how long is the restoration time that they have to finish the?
Well, it looks, uh, a lot of it has been completed, but there are some items on the punch list there for him to get done. It's usually another thirty days after substantial completion.
That's what I was thinking. Okay. All right.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number seventeen is a resolution authorizing to increase micro purchase threshold.
From?
Fifty to seventy five thousand. Correct, Madam Clerk?
Um, it's to fifty, it's to fifty thousand.
I'm sorry, to fifty thousand.
Yes.
From?
From ten thousand.
I was thinking of the.
Go to the next page. Um.
Yeah, I, I understood.
The county hereby self-certifies the micro purchase threshold to fifty thousand, which is the higher threshold consistent with state law. And this would be effective January first, twenty twenty four and applicable through the end of twenty twenty four.
All right, why is twenty, why is seventy five there on this page?
That's the new, that's the new threshold for competitive bidding.
It, it appears that we need this in order to do the Martha, item, item number nineteen.
Martha Yoda, Trumbull County Auditor, um, Mr. Misaki went back and forth with Attorney Rogers. We, even though the state threshold, and that's why it's mentioned, is the state threshold is now increased to seventy five. The federal government requires us to do fifty. If we don't choose to do fifty, which is the higher threshold, we're stuck at ten. So that's why this has to be passed.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
There's been a problem with it being ten so far, I don't believe. It just.
Well, we're just going by the federal guidelines.
The federal guidelines are subjective. Um, micro purchase threshold means that you don't have to do anything. You could just spend up to fifty thousand dollars without getting any.
But if it's a.
Or.
But this is for ARPA dollars. Typically, we don't even have to do anything like that for fifty thousand. The asks are much, much larger.
It g- it gives, okay.
Uh, make a motion to approve.
Second, the motion.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Uh, only because it gives the county, uh, the latitude to spend fifty thousand dollars now without any type of formal process with quotes or anything. I don't think that's in the best interest of, um, cost savings to compare. And, um.
I would say that just about every county is doing that.
Okay. Well, that's what I just, I said what I said. You voted. I'm asserting the reason for my.
And I'm just asserting why I'm voting yes.
You're not. You're interrupting. So that, and, and for that reason, my vote is no.
Item number eighteen is authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American American Rescue Plan Act funds, Vayana Township Marx radios. And if you go to the next page, whereas the Vayana Township population qualifies as low to moderate income within the meaning of the final role and is therefore presumed harm. Whereas the Vayana Township Police Department has demonstrated that its operating costs, including wages and fuel, have increased significantly following the onset of the COVID nineteen pandemic and has further demonstrated a substantial increase in calls following the onset of the pandemic, necessitating additional manpower and equipment. And whereas due to the increased staffing required following the onset of the pandemic, as well as increased cost of salaries and equipment, Vayana Township lacks a sufficient number of Marx radios for township police officers. And whereas Vayana Township has demonstrated that due to rising costs, including labor costs, it does not have sufficient funds to purchase additional equipment, including the necessary Marx radios, which are essential for communication within the safety force, forces. And whereas the county has determined that Vayana Township has demonstrated that due to the adverse economic impact of COVID nineteen pandemic and due to the need to ensure that residents have uninterrupted access to safety services, the following grant qualifies as a type of project that will respond to and mitigate the adverse economic effects of the pandemic, which consists of the following, a one-time grant to Vayana Township in the amount of twenty six thousand seven hundred eighty nine dollars to be used for the purchase of Marx radios for the Vayana Township Police Department.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Okay, and then item number nineteen goes along with that to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Vayana Township as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel for the township to purchase essential Marx radio equipment for communication within the Vayana Township Police Department and Safety Services as fully described in Exhibit A. And the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of twenty six thousand seven hundred and eighty nine dollars to the township.
Motion to approve.
Second.
For Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty is to receive the report as submitted by the Adult Probation Department on November twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, in accordance with amended substitute House Bill number four zero six specifying the amounts of funds appropriated from the probation service, Fund Zero Four One during the current calendar year. An estimate of the amount that the probation department will expend by the end of the year, a summary of how the amount appropriated has been expended for probation services and an estimate of the amount of probation fees that the, that the probation department will collect and pay to the treasurer for deposit in the next calendar year.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty one is to acknowledge the retirement of Mr. Vincent Peterson from his position of Officer in Charge, I S P, with the Trumbull County Adult Probation Department. Mr. Peterson will be retiring effective December thirty first, twenty twenty three, with over thirty years of service to Trumbull County. The Board of Commissioners joins the staff of Trumbull County Adult Probation Department in paying a fond farewell to Vince and wishes him many years of happiness, good health and relaxation for which he is most deserving.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yeah.
Item number twenty two is to acknowledge the retirement of Mrs. Teresa Greathouse from her position of Administrative Secretary with the Trumbull County Adult Probation Department. Ms. Greathouse will be retiring effective January fifteenth, twenty twenty four, with over thirty years of service to Trumbull County. The Board of Commissioners joins the staff of Trumbull County Adult Probation Department in paying a fond farewell to Teresa and wishes her many years of happiness, good health and relaxation for which she is most deserving.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty three is authorizing the expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Funds. Expenditure for water and sewer infrastructure, City of Niles.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Could you read a little more?
Yes, down, down toward the center of that. Um, whereas the city of Niles is located partially in a qualified census tract. And whereas the city of Niles watered system requires a main gate valve replacement in its water system to ensure continued Ohio EPA compliance to protect, protect drinking water from contamination and sediment. Whereas the final rule and C W S R F and D W S R F expressly contemplate water line projects as eligible expenditures. Whereas the county has determined that the city of Niles has demonstrated that the main gate valve is responsive to an identified need to maintain adequate minimum level service and is the most cost-effective means for meeting that need and therefore authorize a one-time grant to the city of Niles for sixty thousand dollars for main gate valve replacement project.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
And item twenty four is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and the City of Niles, Ohio, as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel. For the city to purchase and install main gate valves to ensure continued minimum standards for the operation of water transmission infrastructure as fully described in Exhibit A. And the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of sixty thousand dollars to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our regular agenda items for today. At this time, I'll open up. Um, what?
Well, I.
From, from our commissioners first, from my colleagues on the.
Um, the nine one one advertising for the board, has that been done? I don't know that it's been done, and I know that people are already talking about, um, being contacted or trying to become the representatives from certain areas that are statutorily required to form.
Yes.
For the planning. So where, where was it advertised? Because I, I'd like to have a copy of that. Someone forward that, did, did, did we advertise it to the Board of Commissioners?
I don't, I'm, did you? No. Okay. Not to my knowledge, no.
Advertise it like in the Tribune?
It's a, it's a new board and we are supposed to be advertising for, um, the positions for.
These are elected. These are elected officials, right?
The board, yep.
These are elected officials, correct?
Where's the...
Yes. There's guidelines from the nine-one-one review panel from before. We followed the same guidelines they had. Reached out to the, the last board that we had, because that board never was disbanded officially to see who wanted back on or to continue with it. And then we reached out to people in the different categories. And myself and the director did that to fill the board seats, because there are certain categories they have to qualify for.
Right. So whenever that happens and it needs, there are certain categories such as work, even workforce development, which...
There is nothing, it's not general public related at all.
Extremely specific, and you need people from certain communities. It's still important to make sure that we put it out there somewhere, at least minimally on our website, because when people are inquiring, and like you said, you went out and asked people. You're, you're like reaching out to people that you want to potentially see on that board. I think it's important that we put that on our, our website or something. So that when all of the board, myself included, gets asked about the status of it, we can forward that over to someone to show that we put it out somewhere and let them know in case they have, uh, expressed interest to one of us.
I think...
I'm not out recruiting, but I think it's important that the public know that in accordance with the way it's supposed to be comprised, they have access...
Once again, we went over this at two different workshops, and you were at neither one. And it would've been great for you to have been there with the Director of nine-one-one to discuss these thoughts there and not here today.
Not about, it's our, it's our policy. I know that it predates you, but I'll bring it up again, um, as I have...
There, there's no policy. It was a board created by the Commissioners.
Okay.
And the, and the Director has discretion to create a board if she sees fit, as long as it meets with our approval.
There is what our policy says, and we just, I mean, if you read our audit reports, it says that we need to start complying with our own policies. And it, it is that the, uh, advertisements need to be put out there whenever there's a, a board.
Seventy-five to eighty percent of what you submitted to the audit report did not make it in the report, just for the record.
So, again, where is this advertised? Can we make, I am asking that we make sure that it's put on our website, that we have a, a nine-one-one committee that the Board of, the, the Board of Commissioners has and for the purpose of updating their...
The nine-one-one committee was a township representative, the largest city. I, I believe two cities. If you look at it, it's very self-explanatory. Ask the Director. She will give it to you, the requirements.
Okay. Well, if she provides that to our IT, I'm hoping that that could be placed on...
And she may reach out to all the people and let them know through various channels. I don't know that.
You're asking the other Commissioners to do something that you can do yourself. I don't understand.
I don't have the ability to post on our website, but I, I think that that would be a good thing.
I'm saying to ask the Director what she's done.
Sounds like one of the Commissioners was even trying to find people for it, so...
Absolutely was. To move forward in the county to, to make progress.
To do my job.
For that. They have not been seated yet officially. They've not been brought in front of the board yet for us to vote on them yet, and they have not met yet.
And I believe, I believe, Mr. Chairman, that our Director went to the Township Association too, or was going to go to the Township Association.
There were various channels. I know that she was in communication. Which ones, I don't want to speak for her.
Okay.
But I know there are various channels of police chiefs, fire chiefs, meetings that she goes to where it was publicized. And again, Commissioner, I wish you would attend those meetings once in a while to even have a gist of what's going on instead of hearsay. We have them every Tuesday, and you're invited every week. And then, and you usually have yours at eleven, and I've seen you haven't even been there the last three weeks at eleven for your meetings. So I don't know how you're getting your information. Okay, anyone else from the board have anything?
I know Mr. Letson and Mr. Purdue are here. If we'd allow them to speak.
Yes, would you like to?
Yeah.
Have the floor?
Yesterday, and I had a family, not that it's anyone's business, but a funeral, and, and someone who passed abruptly that we had to deal with was hosp...
I heard that last week, I know.
To enjoy attacking people, but I think it's insensitive and, and crude. Go ahead, Mr. Letson.
My name's Dan Letson. I practice law here in Warren, Ohio. I'm a member of the Animal Welfare League Board. Mr. Purdue's the Chairman of the Board. He's asked me to speak on his behalf as the Chairman. We made an ARPA application asking for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars based on a hundred-and-fifty percent increase in animal intake since the beginning of the pandemic and an increased cost of eighty-four percent for personnel and the food for these animals, the people to take care of them. I know the board has seen the application. Uh, there's been no vote taken on that application. Uh, and the application's pretty self-explanatory on, "We are the Humane Society. We respond to calls for injured, hurt, and abused animals." Uh, "We're also the enforcement arm for abused and neglected animals. We prosecute the cases against people who purposely do these things." Um, "The need is great. The resources are limited. We appreciate that." I just want to point out to the Commissioners, in the alternative, we're entitled to ask you for money from the General Fund on a yearly basis to make an appropriation to us. Um, certainly, I don't know the finances of the ARPA fund or what's available to you to, uh, still remit to people who are requesting money. But the Humane Society's never come before the board in any year and asked for an appropriation, uh, for the services of the Humane Society. So in the alternative to the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars we've asked for out of the ARPA funds, we'd ask the board to consider, if it fits the finances better, some similar amount be appropriated from the General Fund to support the humane services, uh, of the Animal Welfare Board. Um, we're in the middle of winter now. Uh, the, uh, the need becomes much greater in the winter, as you know. Uh, dogs are abandoned, dogs are left out in the cold. The responses of the Humane Society, uh, are increased drastically these next seven, uh, several months. Um, we are sort of like old Mother Hubbard. We've gone to the cupboard to get a bone, and we're, we're not finding many bones in the cupboard. Donations are, uh, substantially down. Uh, some of that's as a result of national advertising by national organizations that ask, uh, for donations for pets. They spend none of that money in Trumbull County. None of the money you see on TV with the poor abused and neglected animals, uh, come into Trumbull County. Not one dime, not one dime. But they can afford to do the advertising on TV and ask for those donations. Uh, and those have increased in the last two years, as you, as you've seen. I'm sure those are worthy causes. Our cause is Trumbull County. Uh, theirs is not. Uh, again, we are the Humane Society. We're it. There's only one in the county. Uh, we have four officers presently. Uh, we don't want to have to reduce staff. Uh, the need is there. The prosecutions continue for people who intentionally, uh, do this to animals. Uh, the recoveries are minimal against those people. There's never, there's never any restitution ordered for the cost of taking those animals in and keeping those animals. Uh, while we think it's important that the courts entertain these matters and they find people guilty who do this on purpose, uh, the thought that there's any money coming from any court fines i- is just not so. We, we receive nothing. Judges are reluctant to, uh, uh, punish them with money. They will give them other sentences and probation. Uh, but they can't afford to treat their animals properly. They can't afford to make restitution for the cost. The cost of keeping just one dog, uh, has increased from three-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars a couple of years ago to four-hundred dollars. Uh, that's a minimal cost. Uh, uh, that's the minimum we pay for a dog. That's if the dog isn't hurt. That's if the dog doesn't need any surgery. That's if the dog doesn't need any medication. Veterinary costs are given us, to us at a discount. We're very lucky that way. Uh, we have the program from TCTC for the veterinary technicians. That's very helpful. Um, there, that enables us to give, uh, spaying and neutering services at a very low cost to Trumbull County families and only Trumbull County families. If you bring your dog for those services from out of county, you don't get the discount. Uh, they'll perform the service. Uh, but this is a vital aspect, one that's statutory, uh, for the Commissioners to, uh, oversee and support if in their discretion they find that these services are necessary for the residents of Trumbull County. We, of course, on the board, believe they're essential. Um, this is a problem, a continuing problem. It gets greater. It doesn't, it doesn't lessen at any point that we've seen during our service on the board. So we'd ask the board to entertain this either way. If, if it's possible that the ARPA funds are available, we'd ask that the Commissioners entertain that matter at their next meeting. Or in the alternative, uh, use those numbers, uh, and the information given in that application and make an appropriation uh, to the Animal Welfare Board in a similar amount.
I have a question. What would the statutory amount be that you're entitled to pursue to...
There is, there is. It's in your discretion.
In your discretion.
But it's, uh, a habit. Seventeen seventeen fifteen.
I was looking something else up earlier this week because I was trying to do, and I, I was trying to do some research about what was proposed before and at the time. There was a point in time where a Board of Commissioners was actually able to designate the Humane Society to perform the work of the kennel, but that's no longer permitted, and I believe that that was in discussion.
No, because of collective bargaining agreements.
Yes, you know...
No, it would, it would have been a, a designation.
But that can't be done at this point.
And it's not because of collective bargaining. It's because the law has changed.
Right.
So...
Well, we, we also have collective bargaining agreements that we'd have to honor. So we'd have to either move those people or we'd have to, you know, there, there's things in place already through contracts.
There are some other things that I, that I was just trying to think, because I understand the plight of the animals and your organization, because sometimes I'm starting to think, because if your donations are down, it could be because Trumbull County's donations are up, because they're trying to build a, a new pound, and there's a competition for those scarce local resources for, for, um...
There are, Commissioner, but I'd point out to you, there, sort of, that's apples and oranges. The pound can't perform the emergency responses that we perform. The pound can't perform the medical, uh, component that so many of these animals that are taken in from the Humane Society. You know, we have drop-offs, people who can't care for their animals anymore, and they bring them to us. These are the animals that come to us because of reports of abuse and neglect. The pound has no ability. Those animals have to almost be immediately euthanized at the pound because, unless we're able to take them, and often that happens. Often, the pound will call the, the Humane Society and say, "Do you have room? Can you take this? Can you treat this dog?" But the pound doesn't have a, a humane function that way.
While you're here, can I ask you about some other things?
I don't really have a choice. I'm on the spot right now, so...
Um, they relate to...
They can't, they can't hear you in the back with their microphone.
Relates to the, um, uh, when you are, when we are leasing space, like, do we have an, I just keep on thinking, is there an alternate solution um, to book constructing a new center? We have overflow of animals, and you're already having an area that can be leased.
That area needs a complete build-out.
We, we've investigated adding on to our building. Presently, Commissioner, we're struggling to keep the heat on in our building. It's a, it's a large, large building. We've investigated ways to reduce the cost. The utility, uh, bills in that building are just almost crippling. Uh, we've investigated, uh, uh, solar panels. It's a large roof. We think we can, uh, perhaps manage with that. That's a three-hundred-thousand-dollar cost. We would have to apply for grants and other, and there are grants to be had for that kind, and there are, we, we wouldn't benefit from any tax credit because we're a not-for-profit. But, uh, ameliorating the pound and the shelter together, uh, it just, for whatever reason the legislature chose to make, uh, those are two separate entities. Again, we do accept from the pound. Uh, we don't say, that's a one-way street.
But there's a lea, there's a leasing of space, and there's a capability of leasing of space for some overflow. I'm just wondering how sustainable that could potentially be, because then if we could spend some money to do that in the long run, it could be less costly than...
Wait. Wait, wait, are you talking, I, I just have a question. I just have a question. Because it needs cleared up.
We would never be able to lease sufficient space for what the pound would need for overflow. The, until we would have the opportunity to build out. There's the other issue, Commissioner, of there are different kinds of animals that go to those two different facilities. If our veterinarian was here on the board, Dr. Sparks would tell you that typically the animals that get to the pound are not socialized animals. They're vicious animals in many, many instances. And it's, uh, putting the staff of the AWL at risk.
Okay.
Uh, and that's...
We ultimately, at the end of the day, and I've had concerns from the public about this, our pound, sometimes there's a statutory way that it should be, its duties are, but oftentimes the volunteers come, and then they sort of run it more like a rescue. And so I, I...
It has nothing to do with this.
And they rely on us for some of the help with that. And as the board knows, we've, we've entered into discussions with the board about giving a piece of land for you to construct this new pound, which we think would be helpful to have one center for, on this issue for the people in Trumbull County, sort of a, I hate to say one-stop shop, but that's really what it would be. And there will be times when people will come to the AWL with a, with an animal that we can't take, and we'll tell them they have to take it over to the pound, especially any vicious animal. And our people can recognize that when they see it almost immediately.
Unfortunately, the, our, I know that you guys train. All of your employees who come in have training to be able to identify...
Certifications and educations also.
In order to be able to identify...
Yeah.
Um, these types of animals, and then unfortunately, you have to make a decision whether or not you're going to... But in Trumbull County, our staff does, are you able to share that, the training? Uh, I, I just think it'd be important for us, because we tend to hold on to animals sometimes for years that have been bite wrists.
Um, you know what we would do? We would ask the, uh, uh, program from TCTC and Kent State. I, I misspoke. It's not TCTC. It's Kent State that we do the veterinarian technician program with. We could speak to those people about training for, uh, county personnel, if that's possible.
So, so again, um, Commissioner, you've been pushing for this narrative of not getting a new building for the dogs, and I don't understand exactly why. Now you know that we can't lease space from the Animal Welfare League. I told you that on before, and that it wouldn't even, if, even if we could, there'd be a substantial build-out, and it would be expensive to where we'd need to buy our own, to where we'd have to have our own building.
It definitely could have happened.
He's telling you it couldn't.
No. Before, when you were here and it was statutorily permitted, there were...
It was seven-hundred-thousand dollars a month.
Where, where is the proof of that? You, you just said that, that there is, there's...
Again, call the AWL.
Seven-hundred-thousand dollars a month, was it?
I, I, you know...
For the build-out and everything, yes.
Prepared to address this.
For the build-out and everything, yes.
No one believes what you say unless you have a paper, Mara.
Okay.
Okay.
Here, here's the, here's the second thing. When you bring up overflow from the pound and to, to have, how's the dogs there? Are you considering keeping the pound as it is? And then having the overflow go to Animal Welfare League? Is that what you're proposing? I'm, I'm just asking a question.
I don't have a response.
No, I'm asking her a question.
Do you have, like, there was a lease situation that happened where there was no cost. How many went over there at that time?
I'm sorry.
You don't know?
I don't have staff here.
At, at the end of the day, we had a public meeting on this, on the distribution of the ARPA funds. This is something I'm very passionate about. This is something I'm ready to get behind. I was ready to get behind then. I didn't have the support of my board. I think you need the full two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of the ARPA dollars. I, when Lori Shandor came here and talked about the effects that COVID has had on these animals and on the animal community and on the, the, the amount of money that they're not able to generate, I thought it was worthwhile then, and I think it's worthwhile now. I think this board needs to entertain that immediately.
I think we need to entertain it, but I, I, before that, I want to go through our remaining, the balance of the application.
Oh, we understand. We'll be back next week, Commissioner.
I want, I want to go through the balance of the applications to make sure that we have all of our township projects covered, because we're getting down to the end. And then I, and, and that would be the only one outside of the community projects that I'd be interested in.
I appreciate that.
What a shame.
When I propose the alternative that you're allowed to give us money from the General Fund if we request it, you...
Would you rather do that?
I'd like the record to reflect, this is an official request if this, if the ARPA money won't come through. That's one that, uh, has to be done, and we have to defer to the auditor. We're supposed to make this an annual request, so your books close at the end of the year, don't they, auditor? Yeah, so...
I think this is exactly what the ARPA funds were meant to do. This doesn't fall under, uh, the, when we're talking about our budgets and everything we need to do. Uh, we are giving out a lot of general fund money. We have ARPA money left. I think that this is a, a... I think that this is a, a genuine, um, ask and a genuine cause that we can definitely fund through ARPA money. And I said that before and I'll say it again.
We'll come see you again next week. Thank you for entertaining the request. Thank you. Mr. Perdue, is there anything you wanted to say?
I may get quick.
Sorry.
I'm not a public speaker, that's why. My name's John Perdue. I own McDonald's and, uh, the area thirteen McDonald's. That's probably why you know me, uh, because I do work the stores. I'm, I was on the board, they asked me to become president. Uh, we're in a situation now and Dan was very elegant, the way he spoke and that. But we're in a situation now that it's tough making payroll. It's out of that. And the problem is if we close, there's no place to send the animals because we do take the animals from, uh, the pound now. If they're overflowing, I think we charge them fifteen dollars per dog. But the fact is, we're going to get to the point, as it does get colder, we probably get a couple hundred over January, February and March of the cases we have to go out and, and the pound does it too, and they're not going to have a place. Point is, we can't afford to close. I've taken money out personally myself just to make sure if we can't make the payroll, we can make the payroll. Well, the only thing I'm trying to say, I'm not very good at it, is that we're in trouble. We need your help. That's all I can say. All right.
I, I'd like to ask our board if we could go, um, maybe next, possibly next Tuesday afternoon, um, and go over the balance. When we had our productive meeting, when we went over the actual list of the ARPA applications, um, I'd like to ask the board if we can go back over them, the, the remaining ones that have not been funded.
At this time, I, I, I met with Martha yesterday and went over exactly what you're talking about. We have so many ifs that are still out there and we have not, since our last meeting, we've submitted forty some to the attorney. We've only got five or so back. So, and we really can't evaluate anything yet because we don't know what's approved, what's not approved yet. We had, out of the ones we had recently, I think we had three denied and two approved, but there's still forty some that are remaining. And I think it's way too early to reevaluate where we are until we get through some more of these approvals to see what's going to qualify and what's not and what the final price tag is going to be. We have the, uh, neighborhood partnership grant for demolition that we appropriated up to two hundred or two point two million. We don't know two million, but another two hundred fifty thousand, they requested on top of that, that we don't even know what the bill is yet for the Ween Building. It could be two hundred thousand, it could be four hundred, it could be five, we don't know yet. So until we have those facts, I think that's premature. I, I'm thinking as we get into January, February, it would be more realistic, responsible timeframe.
More quickly though, because I want to make sure that they're taking, in fact.
You can try to do that, but we still have forty ahead of them.
It's, it shouldn't be, I understand ahead of whatever, but th- this is needs-based and they have a problem that they're not going to be able to address unless we move more quickly because that's the time that they're going to be needing those services. The one thing that would expedite this one, it would be that we've already, it, it's already been deemed eligible to use funds for this purpose because I believe Healthy Hearts and Paws got a grant approved through ARPA and it was very similar. So I believe based on looking to see the eligibility in the past with the other organization that this should be something that's considered eligible. And I honestly still oppose improving the driveway at the church, uh, where they're going to be, they use it for rentals, okay? I would rather use that two hundred fifty thousand dollars, nix that.
What church?
And use it toward this project right now because we know that that's in our budget and you guys decide, um, it's the, they're, they're saying that they're going to be doing health department things over there, um, but it's.
Southwest side of Warren project with the bishop.
You took the, um, health department out of Warren, but you want to, basically there's go, it, there's going to be rentals of the property. And I, 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 again, I just categorically disagree with using things at a, a face-based facility, but, um, I would prefer to use that money because it was about two, it was about the same amount as your request towards this cause and do it expeditiously. That's my proposal. I just don't want to wait until January, February because, yeah. And I'd prefer to meet next week. Does the board oppose meeting next week in order to go over?
We know exactly what's left. I, I don't understand what that meeting's going to do. If we do our due diligence, we each know exactly what's left in the pot or thereabouts. So it's either, it's a matter of if you want to fund this or not. And if you want to send it to the attorney and put it on, on the front burner, let's do it. I'm for that.
Can we meet together and go over those things with the dollar amounts like we did the last time very publicly? It was very efficient. I believe we were praised for that and I think that that's a good idea for us to do next week, even though, and then we can identify those remaining app, applications. I know everyone has.
I'm focused on this one right now. I'm focused on this right now. Uh, we can do that for, certainly.
Okay.
But as Commissioner Malloy said, we have like forty some requests ahead of this. So it, I'm for putting this to the front burner, asking the attorney to, to look at this and then getting it over everything else right now. I mean, obviously this is not only a problem for the Animal Welfare League, it's going to be a problem for our pound if this happens.
You know what? I'm going to agree with you and if you want to make a motion to do that, I'll second it and then we can make it a priority so that it could be addressed by the time. Um, it gets too cold because the, that time is like next week, you know?
It's fine. I make a motion to, uh, send over to legal counsel or the app, the application that was made from the Animal Welfare League regarding the ARPA money, um, to see, uh, if it's approved and to act on that, uh, immediately if it is.
And to request it as a motion or second and to modify it and to request that it be moved to the top as a priority.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the public have anything for the good of Trumbull County?
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. I was curious if the board got those figures I asked about last week?
Which, which figures, Mr. Shook? I'm sorry.
Uh, when I asked last week, and I'm, I might need more than two minutes, I'll try to keep it brief. Uh, the figures I asked about, about what it costs Trumbull County for Ms. Frenchco's stunt with the CPO? Anybody get those numbers?
Magistrate was twenty-five hundred dollars for the day is the only figure that I was able to get back yet. That doesn't include the cost of the clerk or anyone else that was in there, but twenty-five hundred for the day for the magistrate.
Well, that was a judge. Well, in my, in, 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 in the final hearing, it was a judge, a visiting judge.
Correct.
So there's still more numbers that might need to be calculated into that.
There would be some other figures with that, yes.
Uh, next thing I'd like to address is, it, it's a shame that Ms. Frenchco was so against the much-needed new pound that people in this community have waited a very long time for. It's a shame that she's so against it. I, I don't understand. Uh, the next thing I have to talk about is, there was an incident here last week after the official meeting concluded. Uh, Ms. Frenchco made a scene about me being here in this room and talking with a sheriff's deputy. Law enforcement, I was talking to law enforcement. She made a thing about it. She had them close off the, the wall and then supposedly that wasn't good enough for her to be able to do her work. She then went out in the, in the hallway there and made a scene. Is it my understanding that this building is owned by the people? This room is owned by the people. The chairs you sit in are owned by the people and you guys work for the people, is that correct? Now, as the board, is there a reason that people can't mingle and converse in this room after a meeting is over? Is there anything about that that there, that can't happen?
As president of the board, I would say it's a public, public building.
I mean, typically there's no problem with it.
And as long as we don't have pre-scheduled business in here that isn't privy to the public, it should be open to the public.
And you guys have a secured area that you can go to where you have offices to do your work.
Correct, those areas are off limits.
Those areas are off limits.
Yes, sir.
Now, if we tried to go in there, that would be wrong, right?
Right.
But this is the people's room right here.
Correct. Especially after a meeting.
After a meeting, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, and I was talking to Officer Carr, now I don't see him here today. I sure hope that what happened last week isn't why he's not here today because that would have been very wrong and I'll have to look into that. But this, this nonsense with this commissioner, this, this has got to stop. It really got to stop. I shouldn't have to come in here every week. She went out in the hallway and she almost ambushed me and a few other people that were here when we finally did walk out.
I'm going to give him, I'll grant him more time.
She was out in the hallway out there with her phone as her weapon and she ambushed us and we tried to approach the elevators and she said something, I, I listened a few times, I don't know, it's difficult to get it right. He was ordered not to be, in the order it said not, he was advised not to be around something lingering. Now, that's absolutely false. That's a one hundred percent lie. Ms. Frenchco took a run at me and she did the CPO and she lost because she lied and she manipulated and she deceived the court. And that's why she lost because there was no case. There is no order. It was not ordered and it was not suggested. I have every right to come to these meetings and speak and express my first amendment rights. Just because she doesn't like it, doesn't mean it's wrong. She doesn't own this building and she doesn't own me. She doesn't get to tell me who I can and can't talk to, or if I want to stand here in a public room and talk to somebody afterwards. She's not the queen of Trumbull County. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Okay, we'll go to the phone lines. If you've got a comment or something for the good account of the county, hit star six, please, and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Amanda Aver, Warren, Ohio. Um, I just wanted to piggyback, uh, the, the support that AWL needs. They, as the gentleman said, they are literally the only humane agents for our county and they are so, they're, uh, vitally important. Um, and he's absolutely correct. Those national ads, as I actually got a text from the Humane Society of the U.S. as this meeting was going on, those funds don't go to local organizations. Um, they're used for more national projects. So any help that, uh, the commissioners can give to AWL is, would, you know, be vitally important. And, um, just to clarify a couple other things, AWL is housing ten dogs for the pound, that's their maximum, at a rate of thirteen dollars a day that voices the five oh one C three associated with the pound is covering the cost of. Um, and yes, it is true that, um, uh, the animals that come into the pound are generally unsocialized. Very often, or excuse me, very rarely are they ever quote unquote vicious dogs. And when there is a question, um, with, if there is a dog that may be deemed vicious, um, normally trainers are brought in to evaluate those dogs before a definitive decision is made. Um, there is no dog that has been here for years. Um, we did have a few long timers, um, a couple of years ago that did spend a little over a year here. Um, but it, it's not general practice and those are dogs that are adoptable, they're just overlooked. So that's no one's fault that the dog ends up being here for a long time, just like dogs at AWL or, um, Mahoney County Pound or Animal Charity. Sometimes they have longer time dogs that through no fault of their own. So, um, I just wanted to clarify those things and also offer my support over to AWL as well.
Thank you.
I wanted to make a response to some of the public comments. And I'll start with the last one, just.
Sorry, I'm on your phone, please, so they, they can hear you.
There was a, uh.
Talk, please talk into the microphone, not just to your people on Facebook. Please talk into the microphone.
There was, um, there was a, I know for a fact that there is an animal that was sent to a rescue, uh, that they, that animal bit at the rescue and then they sent the animal back. It was a bite risk and it was there for a couple of years cumulatively. Um, and that, those are some of the things I'm concerned with because we, we should be making an effort to, um, adopt dogs out. At the same time, there's a difference that between a rescue and the statutory duties of a dog pound, um, which is, um.
Through advocate.
Supposed to be, um, run with the cost of the tags, which I, I, I know that it far exceeds the proceeds of the tax. So that's my comment on that. Uh, and the other thing is whenever you enter this.
Um, I'd like to clarify.
No, no, wait, um, you've had your time, I'm commenting as a response to.
Please hang up, Amanda, so the next call could come in.
Yeah. Uh, and then the.
Please, please hang up so the next call could come in.
And, and the other, uh, comment that I'd like to make is this is a public building. However. However, when you come into the building and you come downstairs through the security, they ask you what your purpose is here and you have to come for a purpose. So if you're coming up to the commissioners' meeting, you're allowed to come up for the commissioners' meeting. But when that meeting is over, there is no longer, uh, this is not a public space for gathering and lingering and having meetings and discussion in the conference room. That's no different than a court chambers or a council meeting. When that, when they are over, of course, there's a little bit of discussion while the deputies or the police officers are at a council meeting or what have you, but then everyone within a reasonable, but usually about fifteen minutes or so, they'll, they'll exit, they'll leave. Uh, here in this space, what happened last week and what's happened at other times, the certain individuals hang, hang out and then the deputies leave. So la- last week, the deputy left with an individual who via a court order was told that they should stay away from me. And I, I think that that's, uh, we need as commissioners to be respectful, uh, of each other and our space and not allow this room to be used for just.
Commissioner, I think you got it wrong. The deputies are here, the deputies are here to protect the public from you, not to protect you from the public.
You're the one with the restraining orders.
They're requesting two deputies to protect the public from you.
Commissioner, how many restraining orders do you have against you currently? You're the one with the restraining orders, not the members of the public. Be honest, be honest to everybody online too.
Right.
Please stop with the nonsense. You make the stuff up as you go along.
And you come in here and you prayed Brian Ames, First Amendment Warrior Advocate. I think he would tell you, call your friend Brian, he would tell you, this is a public building and he can go anywhere in hell he wants to come in this building when he wants to, unless it says restricted.
And you should have been to the course of training. They highlighted all this.
Right. You're, you're the one that's, that's challenging First Amendment rights and everything.
You're denigrating citizens out here and defaming them.
Our meetings are.
Shook, Trumbull County resident. I'm going to state it one more time. There is no order that says I have to do anything. You lost your case. If you have an order, please show it to me right now. Show it to everybody here.
Or present it to the deputies or somebody.
And you just keep giving me more and more stuff for my lawsuit. Thank you.
Can't respond to another lie, wasn't even going to come up here. Last week, I was.
What, we named first serve, naming.
Michael Schrodak. Fifth Ward Precinct Committeeman, Executive Precinct Committeeman. John Brown asked me about the fifth ward. We have an election discrepancy in the fifth ward. That's what we were talking about. The discrepancy of residency in the fifth ward and as an executive on the fifth ward precinct, I may have to vote on that. That's exactly what we were talking about. That's it. She started filming, Sean came over and saying, said, we're being filmed. He said, for what? We're not doing anything. So she asked the county worker to put up the partition. I said, good, now we can finish talking about this. Then she starts raising a stink over there for some reason, so we decided to go. John and I had concluded our business. He's worn president counsel, I'm a precinct man. We were done.
We're over at the elevator and she started saying, these people are lingering. I need deputies. And I looked right at her and she conveniently cut that out of her video and said, you shouldn't be filming us. I'm the one that needs the deputy because I'm not the one that carries and goes around security.
Did you cut that out of your video?
Yeah, and she said, here's a lie. She said, I need this room to work. Yet she was making her propaganda video on Facebook about us. That's not working. Go in your office and work. You were stalking us. Then we were just trying to leave and you're taking videos of us. We're not elected officials in the commissioner's office. Why are you taking videos of us? We're not doing anything. We're trying to leave the building. Those are the facts. That's the truth. But you'll cut all of this out of your little propaganda video. If people were smart, they'd listen to the whole commissioner's video to get the truth, which they're not getting from you.
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. It keeps coming up that some people, Ms. Frenchco particularly, feel that when we come in here, that we talk about things that aren't county business. Now, I would disagree with that. I mean, we're not coming in here and talking about the tea in China or what the governor had for breakfast in Florida. It always somehow pertains to her position as a commissioner. Now, if we're not allowed to come in here and talk and get our two minutes, which is all we ask for. We're not confronting Ms. Frenchco out in her home or out in public. We're doing it right here in, 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 in front of everybody. Now, after the meeting, while her video is still rolling from the meeting, she sits here in the taxpayer's room in front of our Trumbull County seal and she spews these lies to people. Now, is that county business? She's doing it right here in the capacity of a commissioner. And she doesn't think that people are going to sue her sideways?
At every, at every meeting, the president of the board says, does anyone have any comments for the good of?
This is for the good of Trumbull County. These are taxpayers that are expressing their viewpoints and we have to give them a chance to express their viewpoints. They're not set up to be here to say, people come up and say good stuff about you if they want. We rarely see that, but we, we do have people have a chance to come here and do this. And, and Commissioner, you ask for a lot of this stuff yourself. I hate to say it and get involved, but.
I certainly hope that the deputies will stay, um, until everyone clears the building or the room.
I, I would advise too, the way you were acting after the meeting last week, I would hope the deputies stay for the safety of the people in the office.
Yeah, to keep everyone safe from me or however you want to frame it. I certainly hope that they will stay until everyone's gone. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? This is getting off track here. But Commissioner, you got to understand, you say this, you're filming your show and then you'll talk afterward and do your little dialogue, your wrap up at the end. Then you go on social media. And, and from what I understand, in the court hearing last week, you brought up worried about your safety and the safety of your children. But then you're on Facebook the other day saying, guess where we are? At a bar with your underage daughter. Made no sense to me after 10 o'clock at night with an underage child in a bar. Made no sense to me. But, but at the same time, you said, leave my family out of it and, and we're worried about it.
About that, like.
And that is a point of order.
How about point of order stopped on the stupid half, half truths after the meeting and incriminating these people for doing nothing. And what we're trying to do is move the county forward. Live with it. How about this? Tell the truth during those, uh, live streams or whatever they are.
Everyone sees the truth.
And you're worried about checking, who's watching? How's my hair look? Who's saying this and that? They'll get on there, call me fat.
Biting comments during the meeting.
Doing the county's business. And, and if they think this is entertainment, I take my job seriously.
And actually the multiple judges have told you to put that away. And start acting professionally.
You've got, I know you've got 16, 17 people on there that are active followers. It can't, you're their favorite TV show of the week. I get that. But there's a whole big county out there that relies on us to spend their money. Their hard earned money wisely. All of our money.
You're absolutely right.
Okay.
So good at running meetings.
Well, Commissioner, I've got other business today and I'm sure you do too. So I entertain a motion at this time.
Make a motion, O'Jern.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
No, because there was some back there talking and I think we still had more comments, but.